National Board of Education Budget Committee Meeting, May 2. The National School District is holding this emergency meeting pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, Section 8, and Emergency Order Number 12, Section 3. So we're meeting by Zoom. Mr. Guarino is here, Ms. Johnson.
President.
Ms. Zeeem.
I'm in my room alone.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Gilio.
Here.
Ms. Raymond is not with us this morning. She had an emergency. Ms. Brown.
President.
Ms. Oden.
Here.
Ms. Timmons.
Here.
We have a quorum. We have one item on our agenda, one piece of business this morning, and that is the fiscal year budget for 2021, I believe. Dr. Mosley, would you like to say something in the beginning of this meeting?
Good morning, everyone. How we doing? Happy Saturday. So why don't we just kind of jump right into it? What the board charged, the leadership team, is to come up with three options. One of them was to, what we say, meet the mayor's 2.25 halfway, in which we proposed some recommendations for the board to consider. And then it was some adjustments we made to the original 2.8% increase in our budget to get it down to 2.25. So at this point, I think it's important, a couple of things. What, you know, the question to the board is, what would you propose to accept in terms of the budget adjustments? So you can always send the 2.28 to the city. You can also send our adjustments that we made to the city. Or, you know, certainly up for discussion for other things. At this point, I'm just going to ask the board members, would it be helpful to have the screen shared so we know what we're looking at? I mean, I'm just kind of throwing that out. If I see, if I point over there, that's where you are. So Jessica, you're over there. But I'm just kind of throwing it out there. More facial expressions and hand gestures help me to understand where people are at. Do I see that work? Okay. Dan, would you mind sharing your screen? So we're all seeing, sharing Gilio saying yes. Well, Dan, can you share your screen with the budget projected up there?
I'll give it a go.
Okay. If not, we can make an adjustment.
I believe I have it as backup, just in case.
Okay. Thank you, Tara.
You can say it. Yes.
So would the board prefer us to just talk about the adjustments we made and then have questions? Or would you just like to just jump into questions?
I think maybe you should talk first, and then we could have questions afterwards.
All right. So Dan, could you explain the 2.53 budget adjustments we made? We recommended to the board, and then jump into the 2.25? Please.
Sure. Okay. So just to summarize the sheet, basically, we're requested to come up with three options. One option is Option 1, which is the existing superintendent's budget. So that's everything that we share. Option 2 is this 2.53 budget, which is sort of in the middle between what the mayor suggested and where we are. To get there, we needed 314,000 approximately. And to get there, we eliminated the three new assistant principals at the middle schools. We, also, in the budget is a sign language interpreter. Our sign language programs for the deaf and hearing are doing well. Most of them are at the New Searl School. We get students from other towns to come in and pay tuition. So what we're suggesting is the funds, those tuition funds go into a special revenue fund. So we're suggesting that since we need a new sign language interpreter for the program, we would charge that to the same place where we get the tuition. And that account will be able to afford that. So that got to about, that got to 304,000 of the 314. So the other 10,000 was, I figured we could increase attrition. And for those of you that don't know what attrition is, attrition, each year we budget, typically, I budget 350,000. I try to be conservative. But basically, what it is, is the difference between the people that are retiring and the new people we're bringing in. Typically, those retiring are up there at the top of the pay scale. The people that we bring in can be all over, but they don't all tend to get the top of the pay scale. So there's a built-in salary savings. So I typically have been, the last five or six years, have been budgeting pretty 50. This would be another 10,000. So that, that's what gets you to the 2.53. And then why don't I just go through the 2.25 also, and then you can ask questions? So to get to the 2.25, which is what the mayor has recommended, the same five items that I talked about previously. It also reduces the new assistant superintendent of recruitment and development. It takes $30,000 for, there's an ELL interpretation service, which Mr. Chopa would like to add to his budget. We do have those one-time funds next year. So we reduce those one-time funds, search just that service. For a couple of reasons. A, we want to see if it works. I mean, if it works well, we probably then need to move it into operating, but not 100% how well it's going to work. So we figured we could use those funds. We increased, the next item, we increased our occupational therapy, physical therapy services line by 20,000. So we would reduce that increase in half. So it's still an increase over the current year, but it would be 10,000 less. The, we've made the decision that the ESY, which is the Special Education Extended Summer Program, we're going to be doing that virtually. So we figured we could save about $39,000 on the summer school. Potentially, it could be more than that, but it's so early, and we really haven't dug into the details yet. So, but we do expect it would have 39,000 in savings in the summer school program. And the last item, basically, we would reduce the operating budget for hardware in IT by 120,000. Now, there's a couple of other options for them to get that money back. We've been doing very well with the E rate, which is getting us discounted equipment, which is allowing us to buy more items than we expected. We also have, in the one-time, 100,000 currently budgeted in the one-time funds that we could use. We could increase that number slightly, probably, if we wanted to. There is going to be some money coming to the school district through the CARES Act, the federal CARES Act. We're still waiting to find out how much. We're still waiting what we can use for. But fairly comfortable, we'll be able to use that technology. So this is sort of a lump sum number where we would end up moving some money around. But we could probably reduce the operating budget. Keep in mind, this is just reducing the operating budget, and then these funds will come from other sources. So those are the three, the three options. And I just want to mention one thing quickly as you consider this. The mayor did send out an email to all his departments. Now, he can't officially tell the School Board of Education what to do, so he did, and I'm not saying that he did. But he has implemented hiring freeze citywide. So that citywide, you can't tell the schools to put hiring freeze. I'm not suggesting we do one. I'm just letting you know the rest of the city is under a hiring freeze.
I'm sorry, Dan, can I interrupt you just one second? I'm not sure is my computer yours, but you're bouncing in and out, and I'm hearing every other word. It might be me.
People hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It turns in and out here a little bit, too.
Yeah. Your audio is a little sketchy. I don't know what's about that.
Headphones or no headphones, Dan?
I doubt had headphones.
Maybe the audio, like, maybe if you, I'll just see. Continue, Dan, talking. And maybe if you, less people are on the video, sometimes the video, the bandwidth, that sometimes helps. Dan, can you keep talking so we can?
Yeah, I can hear you. I can hear you fine.
But it also could be your internet connection, too. Can you keep talking, Dan? Please?
Sure. Okay. So I was, I was just, at the end of my, after explaining each of those items, I did mention that the mayor did put forth for all the city departments hiring freeze in response to what's going on economically within the city. So I'm just making you aware of that. Really, it doesn't necessarily have an effect on your decision of budget, but I'm just passing on that information. So are there any questions?
I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to Dottie Oden first, because I can't see her hand if she wants to make any comments or questions. And I saw, I saw Ms. Johnson and Ms. Gilio. So I'll go Ms. Oden, then Ms. Johnson, and then Ms. Gilio.
I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay. Then, thank you. And then I'll go to Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you said that, Mr. Donovan, about the hiring freeze, because I went through the budget last night, and I started eliminating any and all new positions. And let me give you my reasonings behind this. And I understand what the mayor is saying. You know, some people might think that I'm a know-it-all, but I'm, you know, I do my research. I've sat on both boards. And I think we're at a time of real crisis here, because the malls have been closed. That means tax revenue might not come in from the malls. People pay their taxes, whether it's in the mortgage or they pay it right out of their pocket. And if that doesn't come in, you can't pay, make a salary. We all know that. I think there's a lot of reasons. You know, we don't know what the car registration is going to be coming in, you know, what the building permits are going to be coming in. Things were going at a great pace until this happened. When you take a look at the state, I mean, the state's not going to give revenues, either to kind of start filtering down to any places, you know? Because you shut down all your businesses. Businesses get their tax revenues by customers. And so when I went through everything last night, I came up with quite a bit of savings. Well, people might not say savings, but I came up with a lot. I came up with $2,713,954. A lot of that has to do with the freezing of any and all new positions, which I've said the last time. I cannot consciously, and I understand that the students have needs, the teachers have needs, the taxpayers have needs. And when you push that all aside, if the taxpayers can't pay their property taxes and revenue falls short on registrations, then there is no money to pay for these services. And then you get into a worse position as layoffs. And then that hurts everybody more, where students in the classroom don't know what exactly what the contract says, but if you can't pay your employees, you can't pay your employees. So I would take it behoove the board to think about freezing any and all new hiring positions. They're not there. We're not taking anything away. We're just not adding to. I went through the line item, 9999 budget adjustments. I've gone through commodity codes. I can go through each and every one of them. I think dues and subscriptions, mileage reimbursements. I'd like to know who gets reimbursed on mileage. We have travel expenses, conferences and seminars. We have a commodity code, 71999, Miss Lady, it's equipment for $49,404. I mean, so I listed everything here. I can go through each and every item, or we can start talking about the fact that, you know, let's talk about how much it would be in the budget if we froze every position that was new in the budget. So that's just my thoughts here. And I just, I will not support the budget on either footings here. I think we really need to think about this, and we need to think about everybody that's involved in this horrible pandemic that we had. That wasn't anybody's fault, but now we have to think about our teachers, our students, and the taxpayers. No tax revenue comes in, it can't pay your budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Gilio is next.
Hi. First of all, thank you for the work that you did putting these options together. And like Ms. Johnson, I spent quite a bit of time yesterday going through the entire budget book. I feel, I did have a lot of questions, but Mr. Donovan, you answered all of them in your presentation, so thank you. I think that we need to, I can support Option 3. I think that we need to look at what the mayor has suggested that we do. I don't think we should ask for anything more than that. And I just want to clarify that if we were to freeze hiring, we're talking about the new positions, several of which are already eliminated in Option 3, and not replacing people who have retired or left the district, because we need to make sure that those positions are filled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Can't see everyone at the same time, but Ms. Zeeem, I see you.
I have been grabbing at my, I do agree to some extent that we should freeze all hiring. But I also would like to ask Mr. Donovan, and maybe it's not something he can do off the top of his head, but if we've taken all of this out, what are we leaving in? Because I think that when you're freezing, when you're freezing new hires, but you're adding significant increases to people who are, who are in the budget, I'd want to be sure that we weren't doing that as well. Am I confusing you with that comment? In other words, some, as I recall, there were some, there were some positions that were going to be increased in time and in money. And I'm not sure that this is a good time to do that either.
All right. So there, what's left in the budget? If you approve 2.25, the new items that are left in budget are basically special ed positions. There's a school psychologist. There is a, and there are two programs. One, which is a preschool program, and one, which is a middle school program for special ed students. And the other, which I think you're mentioning, is the communication director position is still in there from moving from 1.75 to 1.2. Those are pretty much the new positions left in this 2.25 budget.
Oh, I would, I would, I, in my view, and maybe I would make a motion right now, but maybe we want to discuss more. But I'm going, and I do agree with Mrs. Johnson about no, no new hires. I think that we should just across the line and say, no new hires. I don't think we should increase the community director either. I think that any increases, we don't even know if we're, if we're going to remain offline next year. I mean, things are very unknown right now, in my view. So I would, I would be in favor of no new hires to include, not increasing the communication director to appoint to a full-time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zeeem. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I do agree with Ms. Zeeem and Ms. Johnson to a degree. But I'd like to know what impact that complete hiring freeze would do for our student, if anyone can answer that.
I'll give it a shot. I think we've got to be careful about a full hiring freeze. If you want to freeze the new positions, I think that's probably an option. But, for example, if we had three teachers retire from Sunset High School, I don't think we could not hire three teachers. I mean, there's 20-something teachers that are retiring. I don't think we could put a freeze on that. Then we'd be 20 teachers over than this year. I don't think we could support that. So in certain teacher hire, I would, to get us back to the level we are now, I would assume we would want to continue to do that.
Well, that was, that was my concern, replacing teachers that need to be replaced, but also, to a degree, they are absolutely right with some of these positions, but to do a complete hiring freeze, I can't support that.
Thank you. I see, Ms. Johnson, and then Ms. Zeeem?
I would like to get a complete, because I've gone through it. I mean, I could sit here for probably a half hour going through each open position. I'd like to get another request from Mr. Donovan, is to list the open positions that do not have to be filled, and the total amount, what each, what is the amount of each position and the total cost of all of those positions that would be open, that does not have to be filled. I'm not supporting this budget the way it is and the recommendations that's come down. It's not, it's unfortunate it's not enough, because I don't want to see come a couple of months from now that the city can't make its payroll, and then we have even more problems than we have right now. It's a sad situation that we're in. And then again, in two months, people might be able to start bouncing back, and the revenues might be coming in with construction and everything. But right now, we're just walking in uncertain times. So, and I'd like to also get from Mr. Donovan, dues and subscriptions, mileage reimbursement, administrative office, commodity code, code 55307, mileage reimbursement, $10,000. Other contractor service, 55699, $10,000. Dues and subscription, 55307, $12,840. I mean, it might not seem a lot, but that's $32,840. Is that something that's necessary in the budget this year? You know, so there are things that might be and there's things that might not be. Then there's another line item, administrative office, Office of Superintendent. There's an increase of $11,865. So, you know, it just keeps going on and on and on. So I think that when you start really going through each page, the commodity codes, I mean, things just jump out at you. And the question is, are these costs really important this year? Or if we need to definitely, let's say, hire a special ed teacher for $45,610, and then you have another commodity code, 51200, for 40,000? I mean, where do you take the money from? If it's that important, and you have to freeze up open positions? So I think that maybe some of these, I don't have a problem. I can send all my commodity codes off to Mr. Donovan, and he can give everybody an answer to all this and tell us what is definitely important and what can be eliminated. I think that might be a good way to do. But other than that, at this point in time, I will not be supporting any of these three options here on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bishop is next.
Hi, guys. Yes, thank you so much for putting all of this together. This is, obviously, it took a lot of work. Excuse me. I would not agree with Ms. Johnson, only in that doing a whole hiring freeze, what Mr. Donovan said about, you know, the multiple teachers that are retiring, we do need to fill those positions. I worry about cutting things from any special ed program right now, especially with the amount of kids at home who are not getting all of the services that they need, not necessarily services, but they're not getting that, that same support that they do. I think we're going to have a lot of kids who are going to be needing more special education support next school year, and who may be more identified as needing special education. I think we need to keep the school psychologists in. I think we're going to need a lot of debriefing when we get back into school. So I'm going to be supporting Option 3. I think it's the best option to bring to the city if the mayor needs to cut more, because he recognizes that his budget looks a little bit different as well. We can come back and make, make more cuts then. But I think this is perfectly fine to present to the city and get their input on it. And again, thank you for all your hard work. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Oden, do you have, would you like to weigh in now?
Yes. I agree that for much of this, we should pass, look at hiring very carefully. We have contracts, and we have kids, and we, there are teaching positions that need to be filled. We've had a lot of retirements. I would agree that some positions, I'm looking at communication director from 7.5 to 1 for $22,000. I don't think that would be an absolute necessity. I think the communications director calling school, calling everybody on the automatic voice announcement that can be done by the superintendent, has been done in the past. I think communication is something, I look at our past meeting, I think communication is something that needs to be improved. And by handing it over to somebody else, I don't think that is always the best option. I think the superintendent needs to be very involved in that. What concerns me most is the director of ELL. It was requested for the budget, and it's not in there. As everybody knows, we've had, we've been dealing with the Office of Civil Rights because of that. And there's a feeling, the recommendation will be, will be coming down, that that should be a full-time position. And Mr. Chopa wears four or five hats. And I think we need to address that issue, because we could end up in more trouble than less trouble if we don't, we don't address that. So I do have concerns about some of the issues here that I'm seeing. That's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you. Dr. Mosley?
Hi, everyone. How you doing? I would, I would like to just kind of address, I look at the position as the communications director. Number one, this is an area in the district that has had some significant changes. And I say we look at the, at the position, not necessarily the person. We've made significant increases in our website, our social media platform, our coordination of communication. We also added last year an ELL position as well around the communication specialist. And in a district this size, it is, it is a challenge to get out communications in normal circumstances with our website, website and social media presence. With that said, we are planning on moving into more of the realm of social media with communications, and we recognize that through our strategic plan as well. And certainly, you know, for, at my level, you know, it's more than just a phone call. It's more than just a simple notification. It's, the hard part is really coordination. And certainly, part of what I'm, I would ask the board is that, that, that this is something that, in terms of the position, this district could benefit from. Certainly, when we're most, when we're online now, and we're starting to move into that platform where, you know, certainly, I think the norm is going to be online and getting that information. The communications director does more than just call and do the things that, that communication-wise, Um, uh, do the things that, that communication wise, uh, this person also serves as a liaison in terms of. Um, uh, coordinating communications with outside agencies. And in a district this size, there are so many outside agencies. We have the YMCA, we have the United Way. Uh, we have, you know, City Hall, and City Hall with, even within those divisions have a, a communication representative that needs information and. Goes back and forth. Um, we honest with the board into the public, there were so many opportunities we have missed out on, because we haven't had. A person to, to really uh, serve as that liaison. I can just do so much and be available for that. And uh, there, there, when I first started, because our Communications Director was part-time, we could not. Uh, force those relationships and maintain them, because the communication wasn't there. Um, it's, it's, it, it was, it was a challenge. Um, and to be candid and vulnerable to the board, um, it still is a challenge, because we don't have that person there. And so we do see some lax um, in, in those areas, and um, I would just share that with the board and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Um, I just want to say that, um, I agree with Ms. Bishop. Um, with, and Ms. Giulio with the option three. Um, because uh, and, and I think that Ms. Johnson makes some good points, you know, there's, it, it's going to be really tough for taxpayers. Because a lot of people are out of work, but if we have a hiring freeze, going to. Um, tho- those kids that are at a disadvantage, special ed kids, kids that need school psychologists, I think, I think they're going to suffer the most. And um, so I, I would be, just to let everyone on the board know where I stand. I just want to say that I would support what um, Ms. Giulio, what Ms. Bishop were talking about, which is option three. Uh, because I think it's important to keep our special ed, I, I, I don't want to see cuts in special ed or, or. In our school psychologists. Um, so uh, Ms. Brown, I think I saw your hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Garino. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Donovan for his tireless efforts on um, budgeting throughout the year. This is, it's pretty amazing to me how much coordination goes into this process. Um, I am in agreement with Ms. Bishop also, that I think that um, in this time of. Physical and emotional need, I think cutting psychologists, um, and we might, we may even need more than one, who knows? Um, where it's going to be some pretty desperate times in the fall, so I think a full hiring freeze would be remiss. Um, I would like to see a printed job description for any kind of a Communications Director. Um, quite honestly, I'd like to see someone with some significant grant writing experience in that position as well as. Um, outreach experience. Uh, and if we were to continue with that. I'm also in agreement with Mrs. Johnson. Um, in that I think there's some line items that we can go through that are non. Uh, personnel related. There are some, probably some personnel items that we just simply can't afford right now, but um. There are some really specific line items that I think we could go through and check off, and I realize it's an enormous amount of work and this is. Again, that's why I say I respect Mr. Donovan and all the rest of the staff that's been putting so much effort into this, but um. You know, in an effort to keep, to respect our taxpayers, I think there's some things that are non-personnel related. That could possibly be cut from our budget um, going forward or from the proposed budget. And this is, and finally, my question is. How flexible, and this is because of my naivety being relatively new to this process. How flexible is our budget? How much do we as board members and um, as administration have to move money around? Once the actual number is finalized with the Board of Education. And they, we say we need um, the six hundred and twenty, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar increase, but then we. Um, once we get that approval from the Alderman, can we re, continue to work with? In that new budget approval to move things around? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Donovan?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Can I answer that question?
Sure, Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm glad she actually ans- asked that question. Um, I'm going to answer it in two ways. One is, um. Once the Board of Alderman approves our budget and we have our, let's say, hundred and fifteen million, whatever that total number is. And we start the new year, we can move money around any way we want. Again, there's some contractual things that you can't do, but you can, if you don't, you're going to spend money somewhere and you need it somewhere else. You can transfer money back and forth. That being said, this coming year is going to be very interesting in that. We have A, that one-time money, I'm assuming it's still coming from the state, we're going to get it, but there's possibility it could reduce. Um, and this year, if for some reason we just start school. Um, in September, the regular way of going, school may want to make some changes. We may have to make some adjustments. Um, because in the budget now are things like sports fees. Well, if we don't go back to school in the fall, we're probably not going to have sports fees in the fall. If we don't go back to school, we're not going to have facility rentals. So we have sort of lost income possible. But on the other hand, we could also make adjustments to say, okay, we're not going to continue to pay all staff. If we don't really need their services to start schooling here. So those are just a few things, but. This is a very large budget. There's lots of moving pieces. So. The simple answer to the question was, yes, we have lots of flexibility. Once the budget comes back to us officially approved by the.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. So, um, Ms. Johnson, and then Ms. Zim.
And could you add me to the list, please, mister?
And, and then Ms. Odin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, but on the other hand, we have to talk about still, they, the school district has the. Is autonomous from the rest of the city. So when the Alderman gets the budget, they can only do a bottom line addition or reduction. They could come back and say they want a million dollars off the bottom line, and then you've got to figure out where you're going to take it from, or they can give you a million dollars. You don't know. But I, I guess, um, and I thank, you know, everybody for the comments. Everybody's put a lot of hard work into this and a lot of hard thoughts into this. Um, I don't have a problem if you wanted, if we don't pass it today onto the Alderman, I have a list of commodity codes. And some of these, you know, like the miscellaneous equipment, get answers to it, it will add up. And the special ed positions that I talked about, one was an open position for forty-five, six hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, that's commodity code fifty-one, two hundred. It was, um, so is that a new position? Or is that a position that's just being moved into that line item? So, you know, we've got open positions in here. And some of them are they, are they in another part of the budget and we're moving them over, or is it just a brand-new position? And so, and I'm going back over my sheet here again, and there are things in here that might, you know. Um, commodity code fifty-one, six fifty, Mr. Donovan, additional hours nineteen thousand, nine hundred. Commodity code fifty-one thousand, nine hundred, adjustments forty-five thousand, nine oh one. Um, telephone voice in the same commodity, thirteen thousand, mileage reimbursement, it's only twenty-four eighty and conference and dues is only. Three thousand, um, eighty-two dollars, but then you got under there seventy-one, nine, nine, nine. Miscellaneous equipment for forty-nine thousand, four oh four. So these subtitles underneath here. I mean, it doesn't tell us what exactly it's for, and if this money isn't urgent. There's another spot that, that we can eliminate for right now, because again. We need, I understand about this, this children's, I don't want to see anything happen with students at all. I'm a mother of three, I'm a grandmother now. We have to take a look at what is our priority, what is our necessities now? Not what can we have if we can. It's just like our household budget. Everybody went into a shocker. Oh, we're spending money. People live paycheck to paycheck. Yes, some people live paycheck to paycheck, because they spend a lot. They like to spend. But on the other hand, we all got this shocker, and we all have to make adjustments, whether it's in the city budget or it's at our home. Until we get out of this mess and we can take a big sigh of relief and we can start moving on in life. So we have to be respectful of everybody, the students, the faculty. And the people who pay the bills, because again, if the money doesn't come in, you can't pay the bill. And that, and if we don't understand that, then maybe we need to take finances one-on-one. So I'm trying to be respectful of everybody, but I want to see where is the areas that can be eliminated. So we can keep those positions or add those new positions, and I understand teachers retiring. So it's just you're eliminating that position, you're putting somebody in probably a less amount of money, a less pay. And we'd be able to absorb that at the back end. But if there's other line items, that is not a necessity. And some of the ones that I rattled off here, and I'll be more than happy to send a copy of all my commodity codes to everybody and to Mr. Donovan. And let's get some answers, whether or not these are desperately needed items, or can we forego them for right now? And put the money where it needs to be if we have to have those open positions. This is what I'm trying to bring out here. What do we actually need and what can we not have to do with this year? That's not urgent. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Ms. Zim, Ms. Odin, and then Ms. Bishop.
I just wanted to quickly correct something I said. I was talking about new hires. But the psychologists I would absolutely be in favor of, especially if we do go back to school, because there will be. We do have a lot of anxiety that will need to be dealt with, and obviously, special education, I, we need. Special education. I mean, I, I don't think we can, we can take that. And I, I don't, they open the teachers and refilling positions that just come open for, because of retirement or, or they're getting a promotion somewhere else. Or leaving the district. So, so a, a complete, uh, a complete freeze, uh, I guess. I misrepresented my thoughts. That's all I want to say for now, anyway.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Odin?
Uh, thank you. Um, I want to ask Mr. Donovan. What is the substitute uh, pay line looking, looking like? Because I don't think. We've uh, hired too many substitutes during remote learning. Do we have some extra in that account?
Are you talking about this school year or?
Yes, we'll, we'll have leftover from this year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually working on that um, forecast, so I can present it next week at, at the Finance and Ops.
Oh, okay.
It will probably be some extra in this year's. Uh, sub-budget, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, I also uh, want to bring up the issue when. Mr. McQuelkin came to us from CTE, he, the only thing he asked for was a. A salary increase for the Purple Panther Preschool Director. And part of that was coming out of supplies. It was a transfer of three thousand, seven hundred, twenty-six dollars and forty cents. So it wasn't affecting the budget. There was thirty-five hundred that would come from the operating budget. But um, I know the, the position has changed over the years. Uh, the Advisory Committee for Careers in Education had advocated for this position. Uh, to be uh, compensated more fairly. Uh, it's nearly forty years in the structure and demands of the Careers in Education Program. While very worthwhile experience did not necessitate the director to hold a bachelor's degree, this person does hold. A bachelor's degree has been there, I think, five or six years. I've worked with her on a committee, and I would just hope. That we could at least allow the transfer of three thousand, seven hundred, twenty-six dollars and forty cents from supplies. Into uh, the salary for the uh, director. Uh, the, the job has grown leaps and bounds, so I would just hope that the money's in the budget and. For, for supplies and that we could transfer that money to uh, salary.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Odin, Ms. Bishop is next.
I have a comment and a question. Um, my question first, are we seeing any savings right now? Um, with the, with the remote learning that would um, help out for next year?
Savings in this year's budget will have no effect on next year's budget.
Okay. Okay.
It's like, i- if we were ever overrun the budget, same thing.
Mm-hmm.
And you sort of think of it as a very clean cut, come the end of the year, we're done with that, and we move on to the next.
Okay, okay. Um, the other thing that I would, my comment, um, was. More in regards to what Ms. Johnson was saying, um, in regards to kind of the, the little things being cut, the little things that add up. I would be for looking at those pieces, um. If we need to, I don't want to cut them just yet, only because um, it's, it's those little line items. That add up and affect morale. Um, with the teachers, we're already asking them to go above and beyond most times. In regards to what they're supplying, what they're bringing to the table, um, and what they're providing for the students. Um, when we cut more from those areas, other people end up making it up on their own. Um, I don't think this is the, this is the best time to be pulling back from the teachers when that's what they need. Um, but at the same time, I would also, you know, not take that off of the block in the future. I just don't think this, this is, um. We can address that in the future if we need to. I, I think we should probably just try to keep things as status quo as we can. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Um, that's a great point. Uh, we have to think about the, um, we have to think about the impact. Of, of the cuts on, on morale. I think that's an excellent point. Um, Dr. Mosley, you're next?
Yes, I think Ms., uh, thank you. Uh, Ms. Bishop brings up an excellent point, um, and I just want to reiterate that. Um, we're, uh, the, the, the mayor has asked all divisions to stay within the two-point-two-five budget um, limitation. And so to, you know, um, and that's all divisions as well. Uh, and certainly we're in uncharted territories in terms of this pandemic. Um, there, sometimes at the end of our budget, we might, a budget cycle, we might have. Um, and I'm just making up a number, an extra fifty thousand dollars or something like that, and sometimes we're able to devote that to one-time cost. Uh, for example, uh, last year, we, I don't use the word extra money, but we had a little extra money left over. And so we did, we took that little bit of extra money and then we uh, I did some uh, purchasing of some technology. Um, and also, uh, we purchased uh, some chairs at the high schools. Um, so we do benefit when we have some of the savings at the end of the year. Uh, you, you, you know, I, 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 I agree with what Ms. Bishop said around morale. Um, because we're in uncharted territory, uh, sometimes, uh, and I'll just use professional development a- as an example. Uh, some, during the summertime, we see a, a high volume of administrators and uh, faculty participating in professional development. Um, in our schools, because of social distancing and because of the um, environment we're in right now. Uh, those activities are not going to take place as we had originally planned. Uh, and so, uh, it could be a webinar, which webinars are, are definitely uh, financially cheaper than having people here in person. Uh, we'll start to see some in those um, savings. As Mr. Donovan has pointed out, uh, we are starting to, uh, because of remote learning. Um, and, and again, it's not benefit because of affecting students, but as a result of that, we've seen some savings around a, a ESY uh, school programs. So as we start to uh, forge into the summertime, we're going to start to see some of these savings manifest themselves uh, more and more. Uh, so I, 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 uh, to, to our point, uh, to cut less than the two-point-two-five. Um, uh, we're not being asked to do that, we're just being asked to stay within the parameters of that. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Um, I, I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Donovan, if, if we do decide to go with the two-point. decide to go with the 2.25% budget, would we be able to include that director of preschool that Ms. Odin was talking about? Would, would that transfer? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we could. The, the funding for that was going to be coming from two spots. One is simply a transfer entry, so we could do that anytime. We could do that in the summer. We could, you could do it now, you could do it later. The other piece, it depends on how much the raise was going to be. But the 3,000 from supplies, you could, you could, we could make that entry now or we could make it later. And there was potentially using some money from the special revenue fund too. So I think the first thing in that is defining how much, if in fact, we want to increase the pay for that position, how much do we want to increase it to? So in my opinion, I think that we can do it within the 2.25 budget. I would sort of push it through maybe HR to say, okay, here's what we're going to fund this position at, and then we can make the funding transfers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I, I, I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure how, how the board would like to, I'm, I'm getting an idea of how, how the board would like to proceed. So before I, I have Ms. Gilio and, let me, wait a minute, let me see. And before you speak, Ms. Gilio, I'd like to move to approve the 2.25% budget to send to the full board.
Second, second.
Okay. And then Ms. Gilio, you can speak.
Okay. Well, one of the things I was going to do was make the motion that Mr. Guarino.
Okay.
Which is why I was so happy to second it. But the other thing I wanted to say is that I appreciate all the hard work everyone's done. And with regard to Mrs. Johnson, I think if we, if we approve option three today and it comes back that we've got to make cuts, or if a short while into the school year, we just find that the revenues aren't what they should be for the city, that I hope she keeps a list of all of the places that she saw that cuts could be made that would not directly affect students. So that's, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Ms. Zim?
I just wanted to ask what the timeline is on this budget. Do we, do we have to make this decision today? Or can we go away from here, think about it and come back with, with more information and a clearer? So timeline.
Dr. Mosley, or Mr. Donovan?
You should probably have, we need to go in front of the Board of Aldermen. I think it's May 17th or 19th, one of those two dates. You should have it done. You should have at least a budget approved at that point in time.
Thank you. And, and so we're still going to, we're still going to bring it up at the full board and have discussions on the full board also. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So there's a question for Mr. Donovan. Anything, any revenue that's left that we haven't used from this year's budget, we can roll over into next year? Or is it if you don't use it, you lose it?
Any excess budget that you have in this year, if you don't spend it, you lose it. Now, the school district doesn't get to spend it. It goes back to the city and they use it to reduce the property tax rate. So it does have a useful purpose.
Right, it goes in fact to the general fund.
Spend a million bucks. What's that?
I said it goes back into the general fund, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, I just wanted everybody to understand.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
No, that, that's it. I just wanted, that's why I thought Mr. Donovan was done because of the gap. And I just wanted everybody to understand that if you don't use that million dollars, we don't get to keep it for next year's budget. We lose that money. So I just, everybody needs to really understand the process here. Thank you very much, Mr. Donovan. I appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Zim?
That, while, while we don't get to keep it, in, in the time I've been on the board, I don't remember giving any back because we always things that we could use it for. I mean, it's not like we don't have this list as long as the state of things that we need and just never have the money for. So I don't see that money going back to the state, but I, I do have to say, I would, since we have until the middle of May, I would like to see us go away from this. One of the problems with this Zoom is that, you know, you, you, you get in these meetings and you feel like you've got this 10 minutes that you got to make a, a, a decision. I would like to see us go away so that each of us could come back prepared with the motions that we personally would like to see voted on. Because I, while I agree with the 2.25%, and if, and if everybody goes for it, I can live with it because I believe after, if it is voted in today, after the budget, when it comes back, we don't have to do it exactly as we put it here. We just have to adhere to the 2.25%. That's correct, Mr. Donovan or Dr. Mosley both, right?
That's correct.
So I, I don't have a problem approving the 2.25, knowing that any of these details are not, you know, we, we, yeah, we can use it any way we want to. This is just a suggestion. Thank you.
Anyone else like, like to weigh in? Dr. Mosley?
And just to Ms. Zim's point, the 2.25 allows us to pay contractually our salaries as well. Make sure that, that, that we are in compliance with our bargaining units. Also to just understand that as people are starting to retire and we start to hire new employees, typically we see employees at the top of the salary range and then we get teachers who are sometimes at the lower salary range or in the middle. So you'll start to see some, what I, I don't want to use the word some savings, but you'll certainly see some adjustments there. The board also knows that there are some admin positions that we're going to be looking to fill as well. Some of our top people have, have moved on and some of our have, have retired as well. So you'll start to see typically we get people who are on the lower end too. So that, that level of, of compensation will start to manifest itself in our new budget there. I don't want to use the word savings too loudly because we don't necessarily know what the, what our budget looks like until we start to get into the budget cycle. I will also share with the board as well, and this happened a couple of years, my first year here, that we were all set with our special education budget. And then we had some, you know, we had some families move in. We had tuition that, that went up. And so those are some things we can't control or can't have a say in. So sometimes we see those savings in salaries or some, in other areas, they also can be taken up because of some unseen costs as well. A couple of years ago, I forget what, I think it was Penachak or even at the high school, we had an emergency where there was like a water break or something like that. We had to address that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Would anybody else like to weigh in on the motion?
Mr. Guarino?
Go ahead, Ms. Odin.
Thank you. I just want to say, I I know that we are in a tough place with our taxes and I, we're all taxpayers. We all understand that. And under the circumstances, I can understand the 2.25. What I, I'm most concerned about at this point is the director of ELL. I don't think any students probably have been hurt more than our ELL students with remote learning. And with the Office of Civil Rights looking at us as closely, I can understand that. We're still down ELL teachers. And these students are probably going to need an awful lot of support when they return. So I would hope that administration would look closely at the budget to see if there's any way, I know it was, it wasn't in the additional resources that they asked for. It, it had been taken out of there, but I think this this is critical for many of our students. So I would just ask administration to look closely in the budget to see if there is any way we could add the ELL director in the budget because I think it's a necessary position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. It's hard for me to see everyone's hands at the same time, but does anyone else have any questions or comments? We could, we could start the vote unless anyone else has something to say.
Could I, could I just say something?
Sure, go ahead.
Mrs. Odin's comment?
Sure.
Though the, the director of ELL is not in the budget, we do have currently counting the one-time funds in this budget for more teachers. So in my opinion, more teachers are more important than a director spending more of his time. I mean, we still, we still have a director. He does do other things. But you could, one of the options is say, do less of those other things and do more ELL. It's prioritizing his duties. We talk about Mr. Choper all the time. He's a great guy. He's a good friend of mine. He does a lot of things, but well, tell him to do these three things and don't do the other two. Because some of those other two things probably aren't as important. I mean, any job where you're a director or a manager, you prioritize what you do. So I think that's a way we can get through at least next year.
Well, I hope that administration would come back and give us some feedback as to what they would recommend that he, how he prioritizes all the hats he wears.
We can. Go ahead, Dr. Mosley, and, and then Ms. Zim.
I would say that Ms., Bob Choper, you know, wears many hats. He's our, you know, just a quick summary, he is our ELL director, our student service director. He also coordinates our home and liaison. He also does 504. He also serves as a liaison with the mayor's office for my brother's keeper. And he also, you know, supervises the nurses as well. So again, just going back, just to recap, all of those titles at one point existed in our central office. And, and due to budget constraints and attrition, he took, he has taken on those roles. So at some point, you know, I, I agree with what Ms. Odin is, is, is referencing in terms of getting separating the ELL director position because that's very critical on district-wide and for our change population. And we'll certainly look into that. And thank you for that feedback. Appreciate it.
Ms. Zim, and then Ms. Brown?
I was just going to ask the question, in that whole conversation, the Department of Civil Rights was minimized. Are we, I would like, are we not? Are, are we concerned about ramifications that we could suffer because of the Department of Civil Rights if we, hopefully they're going to be flexible in this pandemic, but I have to think that they're putting a lot of pressure on us, or are they? Can, can I just get a feeling for that from administration?
I don't, I, I think it's a deeper, it's a wider conversation than at this budget level. I'd be happy to do that. I'd, I'd have to call in Bob Choper. We can give up an update and get that information disseminated to you. I don't have that right now. So if the board wouldn't mind, if we can just table that right now and then at some point we'll come back and revisit it.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you. I think I'd like to challenge the Board of Education to approve either option two or even go back to the drawing board. I think after the spring of remote learning and the summer, we're going to have even greater need, student need for technology and guidance than we've ever had before. I believe that we need to re-inspect the current budget and ensure that all of our line items are focused on our educational priorities. And I understand that on behalf of taxpayers, we really need to keep our property taxes in check. But that's not actually our job. I think this Board of Education should challenge the mayor and the Board of Aldermen to prioritize education and family needs over city special projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zim?
I'm sorry to come back, but she reminded me of one of the things on this suggested budget that concerns me and I'd just like to throw it out. If the IT $120,000 hardware, see, I see that, I see hardware technology as a critical need of our district. I, I think that we, you can't compete today without technology. It's just impossible. And when we, when our kids don't have access to it, when our teachers don't even have what they need to go online, then, then the online learning, then our learning suffers. So I would suggest in my view that that's one of the items that, that directly affects our classroom productivity. And I would like to see us some way. We already weren't putting anywhere near what we need. So if I'm, and if I'm missing something, please tell me because I, I certainly, certainly don't think I know everything.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. I couldn't get the little cursor to get over there. I just wanted to say something to Mrs. Brown. If you take a look at the city budget and you take a look where the school budget is, we're like three quarters of this whole city budget. We're the biggest piece of the pie. And in any budget, the biggest piece of the pie is all your employees because of the salaries and benefits and pensions on it. I'm just looking here as items that might not need to be added in. If we need another special ed teacher, we bring on another special ed teacher. But when I'm looking at mileage, dues and subscriptions, other things, I just stapled all my papers together. Super supervision curriculum date, 5165, additional hours of 22,500. Those are the things that I want answers to. Those are the line items. Are they a desperate line item that has to be there or we just putting them in there for right now? There's always, always needs. I agree with the city project. We don't need the performing arts center with a bond behind our throats here right now in times that are so tough. You know, especially social distancing. You can't go to the, to the performing arts centers at this point in time. I can't go see Rod Stewart if he came to the Verizon or the, you know, Southern New Hampshire Center. You know, so those things to me are not top priority. I want to make sure the line items that I came out with, with those commodity codes, they desperately needed line items. If they aren't, then we don't keep them in the budget this year and we can eliminate it. Is the budget next year might be tighter? Might be. Next year at this time, we might be saying the economy is flourishing really great and we've got a lot more revenue in the city and things that we couldn't allow this year, hopefully can go back in next year. We're also in, in part of the lawsuit for school funding. And back when, and Mrs. Zim could probably remembers, when I left the Board of Aldermen, we all knew the funding was going because of that Claremont decision. It was for the poor towns. That's what it was about. Manchester and Nashua got a killing on it every year. And the smaller towns didn't get what they should have. And I think Portsmouth was part of the bigger towns that got the killing in it. So they readjusted their numbers. We all knew what was going to happen down the line. Maybe we will be part of, something will happen with that lawsuit and money, more money will come to us and then we'll be able to pick up. But this year, if it has to be a little bit leaner, as long as we get our priorities and the necessary positions taken care of, we have to get rid of anything else that we don't think is as important this year. And yes, you know, we have to consider everybody in this whole mess. It's a horrible thing that happened. We need to pick ourselves up as a city, a country, and be positive and move on and try to get everything going. The revenues will then start coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. I think everybody has weighed in on, on this. So I, I, I think we're ready to take a vote on the motion. And the motion is to approve the 2.25%. Did someone else want to say something? Someone, oh, okay. So I am going to take a vote on the motion to approve the 2.25% budget. Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Forgive me for the clarification. This is to send the recommendation to the full board, correct?
Yes.
Okay. No.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries one, two, three, four, five, six, six to three.
Good music.
Two, I believe.
He's cheering us up.
I apologize for that.
Sounds like Outlander.
It was good.
Motion carries six to three, so we, we have approved the, uh, 2.25% budget.
Mr. Guarino, I'm sorry. I think it's a six, two vote.
I'm sorry. Did you, I didn't call your name, did I? Did I call your name? One, two? You're right. It's six, two. I apologize. Ms. Raymond is not here.
Right.
Right. It's six to two. That's eight, eight people. Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, my phone went off right at the, when that started, right after I was taking that vote, unfortunately. So does anyone else have any questions or comments? Um, any other business?
And that's our next meeting.
Monday.
Budget meeting.
I think we're, we're done with budget.
Yeah.
So we'll come back after this goes to the mayor, right?
Uh, this, this is not going to the mayor. It's going to our full board for approval.
We have another.
Oh, this is committee. I'm sorry. Yes. Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Guarino?
Yes, yes.
We actually have a special B O E that is scheduled into today's meeting.
Right.
So that you can, as a full board, that is our, our practice. We always follow all of our budget approval meetings with a special B O E. So that you have that option to move it today without it having to wait for a few days. Uh, it, it's, so it's already built in for today.
Right. So following, once we adjourn this meeting, we're going, we're going to reconvene as a full board. Uh, and then we're going to discuss this, uh, this budget that we just sent to the full board. Right?
That doesn't sound redundant.
We're going to vote as a full board. Yes, thank you.
Right. So right now we need, uh, to a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 10:14 a.m. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education, May 2nd, uh, 2020. And, uh, I'm going to call the roll. Um, Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Zim?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond is not here. Uh, Ms. Brown?
How's it?
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Also with us, we have Dr. Mosley, um, Mr. Donovan and Ms. Kinsella. Um, and Ms. Ms. O'Gara. So we're, uh, we are here. We have one item on the, on the agenda and that is the budget. We just met as a committee and, um, approved the 2.25% budget. The next step in the process is for us to approve it, to send it to the mayor and the Alderman. So with that, um, if, um, anybody would like to speak, if administration would like to say anything first, they're welcome to. No. Would anyone else like to?
Could I just say?
Sure, Mr. Donovan, go ahead.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson has brought up a number of questions, uh, during the discussion. So I would be more than happy if she were to send me her questions. I would then investigate and respond to those, um, probably via, uh, email. But, um, I'd be more than willing to do that so that you have that information as you proceed forward after, after today.
Excellent. Thank you, uh, Mr. Donovan. Um, Mr. Mosley and then, um, Dr. Mosley and then, um, Ms. Johnson? Did you have your hand up, Dr. Mosley?
I did, and I just wanted to acknowledge and, and make sure that, uh, there was a discussion, I think, Oden made around the E L L Director. Uh, and as we start to, um, you know, if, and I think a couple of other board members. Made reference to be having the flexibility to make adjustments within the budget. Uh, as it starts to play out within, in the pandemic, um, and next year as well. Uh, certainly, uh, we'll start to see if we can, uh, separate Mr. Choper's responsibilities from that to make it an independent position. So, um, you know, to, to, uh, to Mr. Donovan's point, uh, there is some flexibility within that, that structure of the budget. Some of the concerns that were raised here to today at the, at the subcommittee of the board, uh, budget. So thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I will hopefully get it typed up and sent over this weekend and anybody else who would like a copy of it, I'll be more than happy to send it to them. And so we can, everybody can be on, I guess, the same page with all my commodities that I found. So if this comes back from the Aldermen and we need to make more adjustments. We would be able to know what everything means and be able to work through it quickly. Thank you, everybody, for the time and attention you've allowed me through this budget time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I saw that Ms. Gilio and Ms. Timmons were waving, so maybe you can C C the board on, on that. Anyone else have any comments or questions on how we want to proceed with the, uh, 2.25% budget? Ms. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I'm moved to send the budget to the, um, the mayors and Aldermen.
I will, uh, I'll second that motion. Go ahead, Ms. Zim.
But she needs to put in the verbiage that it's at 2.25%, right?
Yes.
Yes.
2.25%. I'm sorry I didn't say that.
No, no, it's all right. I just want to be sure we got it right.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the 2.25% budget and send it to the mayor and Alderman. Okay? Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the motion? Okay, in that case, um, I think we're ready to vote on it. Uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
The motion carries six to two. So the motion, uh, passes. Is there any other comments or questions or any other business? I think we're all set. So I think we can adjourn and, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes, but I do think Dr. Mosley wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
I was just saying, we have a non, uh, non-meeting after this.
Oh, we do? Oh, okay.
Thank you. Non-public.
Non-public, excuse me. Non-public. Okay. So we'll all stay on. Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. We are adjourned at 10:36.